Where do you want to do it?
Yeah, we're gonna do two tiers.
Yeah, we got no choice.
You done? Good. Any good?
They're good.
No, we're the planning board.
Where are you airing?
I'm gonna sit on the lower tier.
Good evening.
We're gonna sit on the lower tier.
Sit down, man.
We're gonna get three of them. What do we got?
I know.
Sound.
Oh, thank you, yes.
Okay, just.
My reminder.
I'll tell you.
Yes, you get the reminder.
Those minutes were like miraculous considering you didn't have any opportunity to.
I'm not gonna go in on lap.
Camera. Two boards for the price of one.
Really? Seriously?
This is zoning influence.
Is it exciting?
Double header.
It's my hang, we're hanging to be here.
Oh, is she not?
Yeah, they came into the store when I was there.
I didn't realize, I thought I was. Yeah. We'll make it move, we'll make it move. We knew what was going on. That's what they say. You don't know the difference.
I'm always involved.
Are we ready to get started?
I think so.
Rock and roll.
We'll call it order, the meeting, joint meeting of the zoning board of appeals and the village planning board for, or the planning board for the village of Cold Spring. I don't know if this is the first time we've done this, but we're gonna do a joint hearing, you know, in recognition with the applicants. We're trying to move people through as fast as possible. I think both boards are really focused on that. That time is money, you know, whether or not it's a residential or commercial application. So we, we wanna keep things moving. So we have before us tonight, the following public notice was placing the last tuitions of the paper of record. Please take notice that the zoning board of appeals and the planning board for the village of Cold Spring will hold a public hearing on Thursday, March 1st, 2008 at 7:30 PM. Or soon thereafter, as a matter may be heard, at the village hall, 85 Main Street, Cold Spring, New York, 10516, to consider the application of SCGY Properties LLC for the following. A, a special permit from the zoning board of appeals pursuant to section 131-49, I'm sorry, 134-9D4. To allow the proposed building to have a front yard setback less than required within the village's B1 general business zoning district and B site plan approval from the planning board. The applicant is proposing to demolish an existing misused building and replace it with an approximately similar sized mixed use building with some additional work to be done to the existing parking area. The subject property is located at 126 Main Street, Cold Spring, New York, and is designated as tax map section 48.8, block 2, lot 48. The property is located within the B1 zoning district as well as both the National Register Historic District and the village's local historic district. Application materials or vice plans may be inspected at the village of Cold Spring. Clerk's office hours located 85 Main Street, Cold Spring, New York, 10516 during normal business hours. And like I said, this is part of the whole, you know, notice that, you know, the sooner folks know that have noticed that things are going on, they can come out and talk to their neighbors. And this applicant has done a really commendable job in talking to the neighbors and making sure that they know what's gonna happen. Because that's typically where we run into issues, is people don't know and then they come later and it's too late, right? Because of statute of limitations or whatever else is going on. So I think this is a, this is a good start. Do we have the certified return receipts for the two?
We do.
Great. What was the response, right?
Yeah. Not everyone responded, but.
Okay.
And we also have a letter from the owner who couldn't be here tonight, just.
Okay. Great, we can read that in next, we have a public comment.
You wanna read it out loud?
Yeah, we can, we'll do it during public comment. I guess we'll let them, just, just, multiple copies of the same one, so they.
You want us to hold these or you wanna keep them? Either return receipt.
Did you do a single, a single set, right?
Yeah.
What was that?
Yeah, it was one notice.
Just one notice, yeah, okay. I guess we'll print me copies.
Okay.
One more copy, so throw them in both files. Okay, great, thanks. All right, so.
Sorry.
We're.
Laura? You need to go up there.
Is there a seat?
What was that?
Sorry. Sorry, everybody.
So I guess we'll, we'll get started if you wanna present the application. We've got a few members of public here and the boards have obviously seen this a few times.
Glenn Watson from Beatty and Watson. I'm here with Karen Pop, the designer. We've prepared the site plan. I'm gonna run you basically through the site plan, the main elements of it. And then I'll let Karen go into a little bit more about the design details which, which I'm sure you'll be interested in. And then we'll answer questions if we have them. So the first page of the plan is the existing conditions plan. It shows the existing building which is to be taken down. The property is about 18,000 square feet. Existing building is to be taken down and this doesn't show you much more than that. We're adjacent to another building right on the property line, very close to the property line. Building is actually into the street by six inches or so, I believe. My first thing we're planning to do is set up the erosion control to protect the, back broken, new name to me and I've been here only 40 some odd years.
Always been a back broker.
Yeah. Is to set up the erosion control to protect the stream, set up the soil, soil stockpile area and that which will also be protected. Put in the construction entrance, which is, they call it a construction entrance. It's actually a construction exit because it's designed to pick up, to knock the mud from the construction site. As you're leaving the construction site, but they still call it an entrance. And that will get us into the next, so that's really all that happens in this plan. Next plan is the things that are gonna be removed. The building's gonna be removed. There's some trees down here that are going to be removed. And a number of other small things. There's some concrete across the sidewalk's gonna be removed so that the service lines can come in underground. And then we're going, we hope to be able to construct this new building in roughly the same space. It is bigger. And that's one of the applications being here here tonight by the zoning board. Is for a special use permit to match, basically match the front line of the, of the building with the front, front setback line of the adjacent buildings. McCaffrey's building here, Silver Spoon next to us. So we will continue the street, the street line in a logical fashion. And we seek that to avoid having this, what would, in our opinion, and I think the village's general opinion, be a very unusual and disarming setback for a new building. So we're hopeful that you'll see fit to approve the special use permit. Of course, the building has gone through the architectural review process. There is a certificate of appropriateness, certificates of appropriateness were issued last week for the demolition of the existing building and for the construction of the new building as, as it's designed. And Karen will talk more about that. We're going to construct walkways and walkways around the building. A small concrete parking lot, a parking space behind the building. This is the only parking space that will be concrete and that's for handicap parking space to, to make mobility easier for someone who's in position that has to use that. And there'll be a ramp up to the building and then be able to go into building fairly easily. What's developed during the course of your review and, and, I'm sort of a Johnny come lately, but through our office and through Karen and through, and through our office, is what, how we're going to handle the rest of the parking area. Or actually, and we provided calculations through earlier meetings with the planning board that demonstrates that what we're going to do is actually going to make the drainage situation better. Right now, this, most, almost all of the site is impervious. It's gravel or it's, or it's compacted dirt, but it's, it's considered impervious. And there's a big runoff factor so that water sheds off the site. What we're going to do is take up a lot of that soil. We're gonna replace it with a system of better gravel. I should maybe in. Detailed, get where it's detailed.
On the last page.
Oh, let's see. Here, I lost it, I'm sorry. Sorry, Matt, huh?
Would you like another clip, would that help?
Sure. I can't hurt. Thank you.
The big one will help, thank you.
Thanks. Are you looking for that painting?
This system is the same as the one that's down at the foundry though, right?
Right. I mean, I know most of us are familiar with. But it's very similar. It's a circular grid and then it's filled with gravel. It's laid over layers of.
There's layers of gravel to create voids. Grid is put down. Grid is a recycled plastic product. It is, it will allow water to go through the pave, through the, not exactly pave, but through the driving surface. Then accumulate into, below the surface and then be absorbed into the ground. So we actually have a reduction in the amount of land, of water that will exit the site.
I know you, you had to take care, I had asked you to provide the flow rates and you guys had done that. Have they, but I, had they issued comments on that as to, as to the handling of the stormwater on site?
No, they haven't.
Oh, they haven't, yeah, okay.
They haven't, I, I don't expect any more from them. I think they were, they, they didn't object to what we gave it to them and they didn't, didn't raise any issues with their, more recently.
But they, they requested the peak flow rates, right?
And then, right, and we provided that.
Oh, okay, and they didn't comment?
No, they didn't comment.
So we, we would just condition ours that they're, that they're.
Confirming that.
That we're complying with code, especially with DEC and stormwater and I9.
So the, that's, that's really the whole thing there. The, the footing drains and the roof drains will be collected. The footing drains will be collected and a sump pump that will deliver it. Taking my life in my hands here. That, that will, the sump will collect the footing drains and it will push the water through a pipe to a dry well. The, and it will also collect part of the roof drains. The other, the other side of this Bilco door will, the roof drains will be collected and the water will be delivered into this dry well. The dry well is slightly below the, the catch basins here and will be designed so that if the system does fill up, it will overflow out of, out of that, out of that, out of dry well. In between the buildings, we're going to install a French drain, which, which is basically a ditch filled with, partly filled with gravel, filled with a pipe with holes in it. And then filled over with gravel. And as that, as that ditch fills up with water, it will go into the pipe and it will be carried through another pipe out here and discharged into a velocity dissipator which will slow down the water. And that, that's designed to keep the water from in between the buildings so there'll be less, won't be, won't be any water problems there. Cover the sidewalks, handicap. There is a snow, this, the snow storage area, it will be behind the parking lot and the top soil storage area will double, that will take a second purpose when, later on in the process. I think that I've covered the main things. I think this last space has to do with, and Karen can talk to you a little bit more about the design, the lighting, et cetera.
Okay. So with the, with the new layout and the new proposed structure, we're required to have 10 parking spaces on the property. Eight to accommodate the retail space and that's based on a square footage calculation in the code and two for the residential use. So again, we have access from Main Street in the approximate location of the existing access. We have the access lane and then we have eight parking spaces along the easterly, I'm sorry, westerly property line and two parallel spaces along the easterly property line. And we're also including as a part of the code, again, this is a deep lot and along the entire back of the property, we're boarded by residential properties. So again, as part of the code, we're required to provide screening between the business district and residential properties. So we're achieving that by installing a fence along the property line, both the easterly and westerly property lines. There's actually an existing fence along the rear property line. There's, there's several portions of fence right now. So we're proposing to put a uniform fence on, on this property with the exception of the back area that we're coming along and turning the corner and then addressing the screening on this area. With the exception of there's a small section between 124 and 126 Main Street that has an existing chain link that we'd like to keep in place and that providing easier access if needed between the two structures. So the fence we're proposing is. So the, the fence we're proposing is a total height of six feet, but it has a five foot solid panel section and then a one foot open picket section on the top. And again, that's to achieve kind of our minimum requirement of a five foot screening, but also to add a little bit extra height without having kind of a solid wall around the whole property. It's also very similar into, in design to a lot of the fencing around the property now on the neighboring property owners. There is a stockade fence between, between 126 and 138 Main Street, which is Bob McCaffrey's property, which is in complete disrepair, much of it falling down. So that will come out and be replaced with a style fence. Okay, so in addition to the fencing, we're also proposing landscaping elements along the, around the property. So we've submitted a landscape plan, which is, which is conceptual, but to, to illustrate our intent to introduce greenery and softscape wherever possible to, again, soften the, the site as a whole. But we also see this as an opportunity along the fence lines to provide plant materials that can potentially grow above the fence line. So we're not relying solely on plant materials for the buffer, but they can add to that where needed. You know, there are pockets where they might be more necessary than others, but relying on plant materials that can die or may not grow in a manner that you hope to, to achieve that goal. We feel that it's better to use them to supplement the fence screening. So we do have, you know, the intent of softscape around the whole perimeter of the property. On this property line where we have a drainage swale and kind of a narrow strip of land between the parking and the fencing, the proposal there is to use a plant material. One example that was offered by the landscaper was Manhattan Ewanumus, which can be treated kind of in an espalier fashion to grow up the fence, but it is an evergreen plant material. So that it doesn't take up a lot of depth. It can be pruned and trained to follow the fence. So that could actually grow up above the solid portion of the fence and intertwine with the picket and create more barrier over time. In addition to that, there are creeping flowering plants like clematis and whatnot that can be incorporated there. So again, this is conceptual and the reason being with plant materials is we really need the opportunity to kind of see what's going to work versus being, being held to a hard and fast landscape plan with plant materials that might not be appropriate for the drainage, the sunlight and the space needed to flourish. So on the back of the property, again, we have more plantings. In the immediate vicinity of the parking area, we have low growing plants that will go dormant in winter because we do have space designated for snow pile storage that we don't want to encroach on with plant materials that could be killed as a result of that. And then along this neighbor's property line also, we're proposing to incorporate plant materials, again, that we feel we need to define over time, but that our intent is to work with the neighbor to, to help add to the screening of the fence by, by selecting plant materials that will help enhance that screening. So the, the other side issue to discuss is the lighting that we're proposing around the site. So we have three types of lighting on the property. We have bollard lighting around the parking area. We have building lighting and then we have some garden path lighting. So the plan is now rotated 90 degrees, these Main Street and the property projecting in. So our parking area again is at the back of the site and we have five, I'm sorry, seven, a total of seven bollard fixtures located on, around the perimeter of the parking area. So five of this property line and two of this property line, or the parking line. The bollard that we're proposing is the Flint bollard. It's, the total height of the bollard is about 43 and a half inches and the light itself is another six inches below the top of the fixture. And the lighting is designed to direct the light both down and in one direction. So it's not a circular light pattern from the pool, but it's like a 180 degree light pattern. So we've selected this fixture, this fixture so that the light can be projected into the site. And even though we do have the barrier of the fence, if the light were shining right on it, you know, it's likely it would penetrate cracks and things in the fence. So our goal was to direct the light inward. We've also had a lighting analysis done for the bollard lighting, which illustrates the, the extent of which the lighting will project into the parking area. So the, the analysis showed that the lighting will illuminate one foot candle at six feet out from the, from the fixture and then have a steady drop off. So the actual distance that the light projects from the fixture is less than the length of the parking space, which is 18 feet. So I'd estimate around 16 feet before the complete drop off. And then you can also see from the lighting analysis that there's no light projecting on the back of the fixtures. Okay, on the building, we have half dozen or so sconce fixtures and these are residential in scale. Again, we've selected a fixture that has low, no or low up lighting and low or no glare. So again, we've tried to select fixtures that are friendly, neighbor friendly and yet serving the purpose to provide safe illumination around the building without creating a light nuisance to neighbors. We also have some recess lighting planned for a roof overhang at the side entrance and for a cornice overhang at the front. The reset, the purpose of the recess lighting at the front will be to illuminate the front entrance as well as to illuminate signage on the front facade. Okay, and then lastly, we have some garden path lighting. These are small scale fixtures. The total height is about 11 inches and we have a plan for about three of them in the front garden area, again, to just safely illuminate the pathway through the, through the property. So again, one of the questions that came up with lighting is, you know, how long will it be on? When it be on all night? And the intent is not for the, to illuminate parking all night. The intent is to be able to provide safe lighting, to run the business, to provide safe circulation around the building while the business isn't used. So the intent would be when, when the shop is closed to have the lighting turned off. We do however have the residential unit, so obviously a tenant of that unit would need to be able to access the building safely. And we feel that we can handle that through the switching of the lighting. We can separate switching. So for example, if the shop were closed and a tenant were coming home at night and they had the, the option of either turning on one exterior light closer to the building and leaving it on as, as most people would if they're leaving their house, to have the ability to control that in that way. And all, also with modern technology, we're fortunate that a lot of that can be done remotely as well. So, so we do feel that we can definitely minimize any late night impact. This isn't the type of business that should have, you know, customers coming and going in the wee hours. It's like a typical Main Street retail business. And we would expect, same with the, the facade, that it will likely be lit from the interior, but we would have the option of, you know, having dimmable fixtures or something that is not going to be, you know, an adverse impact on neighbors or people who's blocking Main Street at night. So I think that covers lighting.
Well, we have one other lighting question that came up. I know the planning board's aware of it, but just to make, just to make the point. There's a question with regard to a car coming in and pulling, pulling into a parking space and lighting the neighbors. It's another, I think, it's another factor that grows the height of the fence to what we provided somewhere on this, uh, plan. I've got, there it is. We actually went to the manufacturer's. This is a, this is a heavy commercial pickup truck with fairly high light. So that, that pickup truck comes in and with their dim lights on, turns in towards the fence and it pulls into the parking headlights first. Their parking will not illuminate above the fence, so it would minimize any shine across the property lines. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
But the, the photometrics on that, like obviously the lights are working like that, like as they pull in. So you're saying on the full path of travel, it's not breaching the, the height of the fence?
Somebody comes in there with low beams, with high beams on.
No, understood, understood, yeah.
Low beams, the, the low beam, the top of the low beam is supposed to be parallel with the, with the.
Driver?
With the road. The top of the low beam is parallel with the road. So if they're coming in, they're actually coming, as they turn, they're actually coming slightly down.
But parallel, parallel with the road at what distance though? Not, obviously not.
25 feet.
25 feet in front of.
In fact, that's the way you're supposed to test your lights. You're supposed to test your, you know, you're supposed, you're probably weak when you guys do it, right? You're supposed to test your.
Every other way.
You're on, yeah, okay, okay, me too.
Who's got time?
You're supposed to be 25. You're supposed to be twenty-five feet back, twenty-five feet back from a garage door at night with your low beams on. The light that's cast is supposed to be the same height above the, on the door as the top of the light, top of the lamp. So, and that's the standard used.
So what, it would, the whole path of travel, it would, the lighting would stay, the directed lighting? Obviously, there's, you know, the pollution from the lighting, but the directed lighting would stay?
Yeah, directed lighting.
Okay, I think that's important, I mean, especially since the screening, the green screening, isn't really known yet. I mean, we got approved tonight, not on what, you know, what might happen, so to give that.
Here's the detail.
And if neighbors are amenable to fencing, you know, because people love them or hate them, or just not anywhere in between.
These are the details that I couldn't find before. And the one question, I revisited the question that you had asked with regard to the solid pipe.
Right.
Besides it being, really, as I explained before, not really any need for it because nothing's falling on there. We also didn't want to have to fill that with gravel because if they did want to have the planting, they want to have some nutrients above that pipe so that the plants will take hold.
Glenn, you had referred to something called the velocity dissipator. And at the back of the lot?
Very simple. It's, it's a bunch of rocks.
Yeah, all right.
Set on, set on a pad so that when the water comes out, it doesn't scour the ground and keep going. It gets, it hits the rocks and it gets slowed down.
Like they're doing on the thruway.
Yeah, they do it all.
With the gravel and the?
Right, like it baffles. So I was interested to know if that was underground? I wasn't, I didn't follow it.
No, it daylights, it daylights.
Oh, okay.
It daylights.
Okay.
We got an issue with the fence.
What's that?
Six-foot fence.
There's a, it's different on a, on a business district.
I don't remember seeing things six foot.
It has to be a minimum of five feet, and they can actually make it as high as they want.
That's not, between residential and commercial?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the, and the fence was part of the C of A that you had, yes, the style was a big deal.
Right, okay. And, um. So about the lighting, you said, you said a lot that, you know, you referred to the intention, and which I totally respect, is, you know, every, when you, once you get through this process, then you're, you know, working and, you know, the, your intentions don't always, intentions don't always lead to, you know, a follow-through of something concrete. So I just am concerned about the, how the light, the light will be governed. And you said that there, that you would devise some sort of an arrangement where you would allow one light to be turned on by, by the person, the resident, I guess, or as they come in? And how do you propose to do that?
Correct. So if the business is operating at nighttime hours, and we don't expect it to be a late night business, but in the winter, even six o'clock is after dark. So it's reasonable to want to have the parking lot lit during those hours. So during business hours, we want, we would want to be allowed to have the parking lot lit. But if the business is closed, there's no need to illuminate the entire parking lot. However, we want the option to provide safe access to a resident. And we would expect that a resident would want and be, certainly be allowed to park close to the building when there aren't other uses, when the, when the shop isn't open. So, so our thought in that regard was that we could separate the lighting in terms of switching. So basically, not all lighting has to come on with one switch. So if we wanted to allow, you know, one fixture to be lit, and again, you know, I think, as with any residential use, you, you hope, like, you can't control what the lighting is a lot is based on kind of mutual respect of neighbors. And you would hope that, you know, they would turn off their lights when they're not using them. And, you know, we could certainly do, make every effort to, you know, request that the tenants do that. But our immediate focus would be to minimize what's being used when the business is not open to something that is of a reasonable residential scale. And that may honestly just be the lighting around the building.
Okay.
Where did the add, tenants enter?
Yeah, in the rear.
The tenants enter in the rear.
Okay, so you want the light there?
Correct.
You do motion detector.
We can.
Sensor.
Yeah, absolutely.
The motion detector becomes a little bit problematic because if you have animals that run.
It's probably more intrusive, the flickering off and on.
But what you could do is, you could give the person, you know, if they're coming in in a car, they could, they have a clicker, like a garage rule.
A clicker.
Look, I don't, I don't, even in a residential neighborhood, I think it's reasonable to have a light or two on. You know, a lot of my neighbors do. Maybe, would you be amenable to a note on the site plan that basically says the full lot would only be lit during business hours? You know, because, you know?
Yeah, that's fine.
You know, because there should be a lot of reflected light off of empty parking spaces in an empty business. And if the light's left on, I mean, I think we've, and it's really, it's really a question. I mean, if you're, if you're open to this, because obviously, we don't have this in our code, but it would be nice, you know, especially, as you said, along the intention of being good neighbors, to just kind of say, our intention is not to light the whole parking lot and have, you know, white gravel reflecting light back up. Especially because you're so, you're, you know, it's two uses that aren't, that aren't always compatible, right? Because it's different hours. And so, then we could certainly say that there are few, you know, two lights are left on or lighting, sufficient lighting for the residential parking, sufficient safe lighting for the residential parking, that the, the parking lot would be lit only during business hours? Not to exceed ten P M, eleven, I mean?
Well, I mean, I, I'd rather not restrict the hour because there are occasions, you know, certainly throughout Main Street, there are occasions when a business may.
A special event, yeah.
Yeah, a special event.
And that's, that's reasonable, yeah.
I think during business hours, and obviously, this isn't the type of business where it's going to be nonstop special events. It's not a pub that's open till midnight or one A M.
You're, you're on in line?
You know, you never know. So I think rather than restricting business hours, I mean, restricting it to hours of operation would be reasonable. Rather than setting a ten P M limit.
Right.
Restricting, as you stated earlier, two hours of operation.
Okay.
Business operation?
For the business, for, for events.
Well, you have residential, I'm just teasing.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully, if a resident is going to have a party in the parking lot, they're going to invite all the neighbors and then we'll mount the lights on.
That's right.
Yeah.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
All right, just a quick question. What is the size of the residential unit? Is that a two-bedroom?
It's a two-bedroom unit.
Is it, but it's just one residential?
One residential, yes.
It's a two-bedroom?
Two-bedroom.
Okay.
Do you want comments, Matt?
Uh, let's see, are you, are you done presenting?
Yep.
All right, is there any board discussion?
I just want to clarify the distance of the, the front of the building from the front of the Silver Spoon building. It's actually going to be a foot, isn't it? Because the Silver Spoon is the same distance over the property line?
Correct, right.
So it'll be five foot, five feet over.
We, correct, from the Silver Spoon. So we're proposing to set our building six inches in from our front property line, that the Silver Spoon actually overlaps the property line by approximately a half a foot. So the total setback, building to building is about one foot.
Okay, and then, I asked you this before, but just to refresh my memory, their patio is completely over the property line, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
As is, like, the front stoop on the existing structure now is completely over the property, on one twenty-sixth Main Street is completely over the property.
Okay.
So the plane of yours is going to be different than the plane of Silver Spoon?
Correct, right. So we can't, I mean, we can't build our new structure on a village property. So we have to pull it in. And we're pulling it six inches in to give us, you know, a little breathing room in terms of, you know, trim elements and things like that. So we're, when all is said and done, we're on our property.
How about the properties to the east of Main?
McCaffrey has a stoop.
Right.
Most every property that has a stoop is on Main Street.
On a village property?
In the street.
But the building facade, the building facades themselves?
Their facade is actually, yeah. It's either on or slightly inside, I think.
There had been an inquiry by the village board about purchase of that elevated area that would bring the, make some of the buildings into conformity. But I think they were waiting to get their grant on the road improvements before they would take up the issue again. And I don't think they've taken it up yet, again. But I've offered to, on two of the properties that you're referring to, to acquire the property so that it's in the name of a private citizen rather than in the name of the village. And that would allow there to be the pronounced sidewalk rather than the elevated part of the sidewalk in at least two instances. Just a suggestion, that's all. It would be a way to make uniformity if, but it's a little out of the, you know, it's thinking out of the box. But it's a way to, if you want to have the building on the front line, have that.
A continuous plan. Well, I, it certainly isn't our purview, but the H R B approved the, a different setback on Main?
It was discussed.
They're understood.
I mean, it wasn't a part of the certificate of appropriateness because that's really part of the site plan and zoning, special use permit. However, it was discussed and they were aware of the setback. And they felt that, I don't want to speak for the board, but there, what was discussed at that time was they felt that because we're creating the separation between the Silver Spoon and the new structure, that that will help offset the setback.
It won't be as pronounced? Yeah, and then I imagine the vacant lot, then the parking lot, obviously gives them some.
And the legal, I mean, if a building owner deliberately builds on a property line, say, a village property line?
They can't.
You'd have to acquire it first.
They can't, you know, they can't build it in the same foundation because it's already encroaching, so.
And just to say, well, we're going to do it just in order to be flush with everybody else, but.
Right.
It's taking too much of a risk.
Yeah, as Bill was saying, most people just purchase that, the village. Okay.
And the plan is for the apartment to be a long-term rental?
Yes.
Not seeking a tourist home for me?
Not like a bed, breakfast, or Airbnb.
Public comment?
Any other board discussion, or should we open it for public comment?
There you go.
Could just state your name for the record?
I'm Bill Florence.
And I represent the neighbors on, to the east and to the west.
That's the pizza shop and McCaffrey?
Silver Spoon and McCaff.
Okay, oh, Silver Spoon, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I have a, I have a concern. I'm hoping to get you to, I'm hoping to persuade you to make a note in your decision about the demolition itself. I'm concerned that because it's a, these walls of the Silver Spoon and the, to be demolished building are in such close contiguity that it's, there's a possibility of some damage to the Silver Spoon building. And so I'm looking for either a comment to, that there has to be some sort of financial security to pre, that, you know, to stimulate real caution by the developer not to wreck the building, that's like a irrevocable line of credit for, during the period of demolition. That's the first thing, that's the first comment that I would like you to consider so that you're protecting the neighbor from the demolition. I know that neither, our experts here wouldn't even dream of saying that somebody would cause the damage, but it happens because the demolition will be somebody who is a subcontractor of a contractor and maybe even a sub-subcontractor before we get through all of that.
Are you aware, if he's addressed structural foundation issues? I know there were some that came up.
That's my next question.
Because, you know, you don't want them to take on your risk, right?
My concern is.
I don't want to help.
Of course.
Yeah.
My concern is whether there's lateral support from, is there a basement in the, in the house that, in the building to be demolished? Does anybody know?
Is it a full, is it a full basement? Not always.
There is a basement under a portion of the building, but the portion that's immediately adjacent to the Silver Spoon structure is a crawl space. So it's not a full-depth basement in that area.
What I was worrying about is, you know, the concept of lateral support.
Yeah, yeah.
What we don't want to do is lose it. On the other hand, we don't want to make this so elaborate that it's, we discourage the development itself.
Understood.
But we really are concerned about the potential for damage.
But are, were you just going to say that he had addressed the structural issues? I can, I know there were foundation issues when they were, when they were undertaking the work. The village and the planning board were put on notice.
I don't know about anything.
Oh, you mean the work on the Silver Spoon building?
The Silver Spoon, yeah.
Silver Spoon has a basement.
How's the condition?
It's, it's, they store, they store things down in it.
Okay.
Claws are stored down there.
All those freezers and refrigerators are down there.
I know there's a freezer down there because that's where the ice cream comes from.
More than one freezer down there.
Just in case you need to know the specifics.
Okay, so you're not, you're not aware of any, you're not aware of any structural weakness that exists now?
I'm not, not at all.
You're just talking about just the site maintenance as they go through construction?
And, and we did go through, I must say, we went through a number of inspections.
And those with?
They were almost daily by the building inspector here.
Uh, Bill Bjarbski?
Yes. He seemed to like to go in that place. And when he went in, he was always thinking of a reason to go in.
Well, that's because the ice cream was in the basement.
And the ice cream was in the basement.
Not anymore.
Just looking bright.
Well, there was ice cream in the basement.
Double call, eating ice cream.
The more serious part of that is that I, I think that we got a certificate of operate, of occupancy, I should say.
No, fair point, no, just a, just a question, it's not a, not a.
And I, I'm mindful that there was work done on the, wasn't, there wasn't structural work done on the first floor at all, but that there was structural work done on the second floor by making rooms and creating a series of bathrooms associated with the rooms that are on the second floor.
Right, okay.
But I don't know if you want to, the weight bearing and so forth, I don't think there's any real change, a significant change in, in the, in the other words, but the support that's required at the basement level, let's say.
No, 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 we're not, yeah, no, no, we're not in code enforcement. I just wanted to make sure whether or not you were.
It's fair, it's a fair, this is part of the discussion.
The contractor should have a performance bond.
Well, I, we need the performance bond, but performance bonds always help the village. They're always in the favor of the village. I want it be and in the favor of, or a separate one, in favor of the owner whose top, some of whose property this demolition will occur on. The line and the, between the buildings, if I have one of Glenn's iterations of the different sections on Main Street here, it looked to me like there's a, there's an encroachment, and obviously, not an obvious one, but where we, where we now say, where he now says, his professional opinion is that the line is in such a place that when the demolition occurs, there will be some demolition on.
He being a surveyor, right?
Yeah, there's going to be some demolition on hit, on the Silver Spoon property. I don't know how much it's going to be, whether it's going to be this much or this much, I.
We, we understand your concern, and we'll certainly, we'll certainly discuss it with John as to.
What I'm really looking for is an irrevocable letter of credit, not a bond. A bond means a lawsuit. Bonding companies don't pay anything until one of us sues them. And then they'll pay some of it. In the meanwhile, most of the money's been wasted on lawyers.
It was my understanding that the reverse was the situation where Silver Spoon's building was on.
It's the stairs, the stairs.
The staircase, yeah.
Yes, oh, you're right in the very back. And that leads me to the back. Thank you for Karen and Glenn, for the five feet of separation. That allows for, for example, if there's something really bad happens in the front of this building, emergency people can get to the back of the building alongside. of this building, emergency people can get to the back of the building alongside, through this five-foot wide, I'll call it alleyway, but it really is, it could be an emergency access, I'd like to, that's in my mind how we sometimes talk about this when we, when I'm wearing somebody else's hat from on your side rather than on this one. But it seems to me that that, that's a great idea, that's a great concern and a great help. So I think that that, that part of the planning is really very good.
But you can't, you can't make an omelet without breaking a few eggs. So, yeah, we'll, we'll talk about, you know, what your request is, I don't know how far we can, you know, we can reach. The planning board certainly, I think really our authority, similar to, there was a demolition very similar, not similar to this, but the risks were very similar, the, next to the gas station, the failing stone wall and then, you know, excavating so close to it, you know. So basically what we understand, our, our job to be is to make the building inspector, code enforcement, aware of that risk. But we'll talk, we can talk to John when we get to resolution as to whether or not we're allowed to. I completely understand your risk and I don't know that, you know, certainly, I get that a letter of credit makes everything clear today, but certainly their liability is their liability, right? If something were to go wrong. But we'll, we'll see what we're allowed to do, I really don't know actually, but so we'll talk to John in a bit.
The idea of a letter of credit versus a bond or versus a lawsuit is the efficiency of the justice system. If we become involved in it, we reduce the efficiency. And you don't want to do that if you can avoid it. At least I'm gonna talk, maybe I've been around too long, it's okay.
There's another way to do it, I think. I mean, and that depends on the property owner and how she executes the contract with the contractors, but a rider to the insurance policies from the contractors that would cover any damage to the adjacent property owners.
That might work.
An additional insured.
Yeah, well, additional assured is, is language of art, that somebody, someone has always figured out that I'm not one of these...
If you don't have a concrete contract with somebody, it's not worth it.
It requires an agreement.
Yeah. An agreement that also says that you'll maintain insurance for that, specifically just that scope of work. So we'll, we'll see how far we can go, I don't know what we can...
This is probably out of our purview, but we'll talk about it.
It clearly is, but one of the points is, if it gets, if it, at your request that it's on, on one of the drawings, then it enables the building inspector to then take further action, or induces him to take further action, I don't know whether, which way you want to do it.
No, I think we should, look, I will tell you, in my role as planning board chair, when, when Silver Spoon was under review, the structural engineer put us on notice that there were structural issues with the foundation, now, now the applicant, you know, here knows this as well. So I think it's, it's good that everybody's aware of these things and I don't, I wouldn't have any issue with saying that, you know, no different than other notes that we put out, basically saying that, you know, the cares to be taken, obviously to protect the prior building and that, you know, that, that, because what we, what we really look at, aside from site plan, is just very broad life safety issues, right? Where we look at a gas station that has a failing stone wall, where we don't know where the gas tanks are, right? And we know that they need to excavate within a few feet of it. Also, what we do is really, we just, as you're saying, we just call that out to code enforcement and the building inspector, so during construction site management, that they're very careful of those issues. I think that's really all we can do.
Yeah, I mean, is there, I'm assuming you're gonna need a demolition permit from the building inspector?
Correct.
So I'm assuming that as part of the conditions of the, of the permit, they may be able to address some of your issues. I don't know if we want to get too involved as far as a letter of credit or bond, that seems to really be more of a private issue between the two of you guys. Is there any agreement? Because it seems like they have to go on your client's property in order to do some of the demolitions, so is there some type of construction easement or something? Maybe that could be addressed between the private parties.
None has been addressed at this point, I just...
That's a good point, they could, in, in exchange for a construction easement, you could issue, you could be, you would, you would grant that when they, when they deliver to you an irrevocable letter of credit.
I don't know if that's something that the planning board...
No, we don't get involved, we're a third party, we don't, yeah.
I mean, we want to make sure there's demolition plan.
That would be consideration for one promise to be...
I don't even think it's appropriate for us to mandate a specific vehicle on the, on the plans because it may be that the lawyers will come up with something totally different.
Right, I just, the building inspector should have a demolition plan, that should take into consideration the name, you know, not impacting the name of the property, but as far as bonds.
I would take that on a note.
The dominant possession.
The note on the, on the plans is that the construction will take into consideration the, 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 the fact that the walls are near one another and that they need to take caution not to cause damage to the remaining wall.
You've got some of the, you've got some clean language, I'd be happy to, you know, put it in someplace, in the minutes somewhere.
Very good.
On the other side, McCaffrey. Everything's happy with him.
He's getting a new fence.
He's getting a new fence. Is the greenery going to be, is the fence on the line and will the greenery will be inside the fence?
Correct.
Okay, so he's gonna get a wall, a wall, okay.
He's gonna get an improved wall from the wall that was there.
Well, the one that's there has been there, it's a historic wall from the 1930s.
I was gonna say, stockade.
All right, I don't have any further questions.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jim McBride, my wife and I, Elizabeth, we own property over, over on Rock Street. I guess, is this the appropriate form? Is, is the demolition of this property a done deal at this point, or?
The historic?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was decided at the historic review board, yeah.
It's a done deal, so we cannot...
It's not even our...
Okay, okay, I guess listening to this, it didn't sound like it was the appropriate form.
But you're free, but you're free to talk.
Well, I mean, where we're at is, we're, you know, so it's, so it's going to be demolished, that's it.
Yeah, yeah, from my own, from my own understanding, because I, we've talked about this a bit too, and I've talked about it for years, is, you know, is large signs, were you not aware that the H D R B was, was meeting on that?
We were aware.
So you don't see it in the newspaper?
Yeah.
I mean, I, one thing that I've talked about, and we were talking about having a joint board meeting, is Vancouver does these massive signs, they're like about this big, right out in front of the property, it just says, "This property is under review by these boards." You know, because I don't, who's reading the legal notices, who's always on the email blast? Let, let, just, just for my own, you know, informal survey, if there were a sign, this is a pretty prominent building, if there were signs sitting out there, would you have walked by and seen it?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Great, that's helpful.
I guess our issue is, you know, you're tearing down yet another historic building, and it's, you know, we're Newt and Cold Spring and we are heartsick about this. It shouldn't be happening.
They were very thoughtful and spent a lot of time, almost a year, didn't they, on that topic?
Really?
Yeah.
We missed it.
It, very conscientious...
I think, I think signers would be, is the way, I think, because it's, I think it's the only thing that works, you just can't miss it.
So this is gone, that building is gone and...
They voted it last week.
Yeah, twenty first.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm a preservationist as well, I mean, but it's, but they, you know, they followed the code and, and the, you know, and unfortunately, that's the whole point of notice, right? Is that we put it in the paper two weeks and that, you know, the people come out and that, you know, the earlier people know the better. And they did talk to all the neighbors, but obviously, you know, you're not a name, you're not a direct neighbor, but it's good to know that, it's helpful for me at least to know that just a sign might, might have helped you.
Where'd they put it up? Do we, I mean, I mean, can we find out where they're putting it up?
It's a similar, similar structure, I don't know if they have...
What will the structure look like?
I don't think they're that far along, I think they have some...
Actually, I mean, we have existing plan, I mean, we have proposed plans which I'm happy to show you, but I don't know that we should hold up this meeting for that.
Yeah.
But everything is...
And they're, they're on file here, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so you can just come in anytime and ask the village clerk for them?
Sure.
And you kind of page through them at your leisure?
And you're welcome to look at my words tonight before you leave.
Thank you.
If you, if you, if you, there was also at least two structural engineers that reported on this structure, including one that was hired by the village, independent. There was, I don't know how many pages, but there was two-inch-thick series of reports, there's an architectural historian who also inspected, that's in, that's beyond the structural engineers. There was an awful lot of effort that went into demonstrating the condition of that building. If you go in, and I'm, I'm not an engineer, but I could even tell, when they put in heating in that building, you know, one of the things you don't want to do, and if anybody here is a plumber, you don't want to let a plumber start putting in heating because they don't think very much of topping a four-inch notch in a six-inch beam. And there was things like that all over the place, so...
Was there any opposition at all to demolishing the building at all, or?
No.
Not really.
Not really.
I don't think it was, wasn't opposition...
Couple of comments, concerns that some of the residents or neighbors had, but...
There was serious, there was serious concern and part of the architectural review board, I mean, very serious concern and very serious consideration over the period of the year. And, and if you go, if you go in to look at the building plans, take a look at the environmental assessment form that was done to, to discuss it. And it was reviewed by, and it was also reviewed by professionals hired by the village.
And this is after the fact, but there are a couple of concise explanations in the comments for the article about it in the Highlands Current.
It's online.
Who reads them?
It's, it would be...
I'm just offering the fact, explanation.
And it would probably help, because viscerally, I think I, I sort of share, I come at demolition from a place of conservative, you know, of conservation. And so personally, I was not as excited about demolition of this, of 126 Main when it was first, you know, proposed and the application was being socialized.
Sure.
But after having reviewed the remarks and of the H D R B, and I attended the public hearing, I think it was the, the last meeting, there were a couple of meetings, that they held public hearings for this, and heard them discuss the reasons why, what is there actually, isn't, isn't the material that is, is, I don't want to say worthy because it sounds so judgy, but...
Structurally sound.
Yeah, structurally sound, but it's, it's more about what's there, isn't histor, isn't the, isn't the truly historic fabric? Like, there's vinyl siding on it and then underneath isn't the original siding, it's sort of a mishmash, so...
But then I've got a different opinion, so I mean, it's just, it's, yeah, so we all, so the best thing to do is come out, I don't, I typically don't come, obviously when an application's in front of us, I'm not gonna come and provide comment.
Sure.
But, well, I, you know, a hundred-year-old buildings are gonna need new siding, so if that's the, if that's the, if that's how you lose them, then that's a slippery slope. But, so anyway, take a look, they went through, you know, a very rigorous process to, to, you know, to document the structural condition, brought in, like they said, historians to kind of look at, you know, what, what they're looking at, and the H D R B ruled on it. But it seems like where it kind of falls down a little bit, with the best of intentions and certainly following local code to the letters, is notice, that people are aware that it's happening.
Yeah.
Because it's always better, it's always better just to get it all out in the open earlier, so. And, and as they're saying, when we started this, they've been great about talking to their neighbors, you're all the way around, but obviously you're not, you know, in the blast zone, so, but you enjoy Main Street, so...
The other thing you should, you should look for in there, or there, in the, in the mitigations and commitments, this is ongoing, in that when the building is being deconstructed, it's not being torn down, and the elements of the building are, many of the elements of the building are gonna be incorporated into the new building, as it's being taken down, it's gonna be photographed and a journal made of what was there, and that's gonna be put in the library and a museum. And these are all requirements, these are all mitigations to the impact of taking down that building. And, and those elements that are usable but can't be put into the building, they're gonna be put, they're gonna go to someplace where they'll be reused.
I also just like to add to that a little bit.
What's that?
I'd like to add to that a little bit, I know this isn't dwelling on the building, but, but none of us took this request lately and none of us were happy to come with a request to the village to tear down a building on Main Street. And the historic review board was certainly not in favor of this from the beginning, and it was months and months of working with them to really look at every aspect of the building very carefully and, and again, as Glenn said, justify why this was a reasonable request. We, in terms of, of you not being aware of this, and I realize the Putnam County News isn't, isn't necessarily the first, first paper you go to, but we had fifteen meetings with the historic review board, we had five meetings with the planning board, three with the zoning board, one with the village board, and it's been in the local papers a couple of times on the front page, but between eight and nine times between the start of our application, which was last April. So this has not been a secretive project, it's certainly been very much in the public eye, and we've done everything we can to...
Absolutely.
And it was a re, and it was a, not the intention of the buyer when she bought it, I mean, the original plan was to renovate the building and, and it just came to the point where that was not a practical possibility.
We should probably move on back to this. Just to be honest, the municipality has to declare a paper of record, and then that's where these legal notices go in, and the Putnam County News Recorder is currently the, the village's paper of record.
Sure.
So that's where you see these, if you get on the emailing list with the village clerk, just go to Cold Spring, New York, Cold Spring, NY.gov, Cold Spring NY.gov, rather, and then you can get on the email blast, so as the meetings are sent and, and agendas are posted, that you'll, you'll get those emails as well.
We're new, so...
Right, right. But I like the idea of signs, I'll keep pushing for that as well.
Yeah, that'd be good.
You know?
All right.
Moving on?
Yes, please.
Phil.
Your name's the record, sir?
My name is Phil Heffernan, and I am a neighbor of the property, I live at seven-dash-nine Church Street, which is over here. And I just want to go on record as saying that I really think it's a very sensitive and creative solution of many issues, not the least of which is how do you make this a viable economic proposition for people? And I sort of expected that, actually, I was wishing for a little bit more of a footprint, a little bit more of a creative usage. This is a building, God bless it, that has been remodeled several times over its life, and that contributed to the structural instability. It was never seen as an integrated whole. And I've never really actually seen it myself as anything that was terribly appealing in the way that so much of Cold Spring is. Now, that doesn't mean that we can't have a couple of ugly ducklings around to show us how history unfolds, which is kind of patchwork, and based very much on how much money the person, the owner at the time has. And so, we've come to the effective end of the life of this older structure, but I think that they've done a really good job, and I congratulate Karen and Glenn and Susan, who's a major force in this, obviously, in doing a very conscientious and creative job. So that's my sort of general approach to what's going on. That being said, I just want to have as part of the record, and I've had conversations with Susan and Karen about the viewscape from seven-dash-nine church. And I think that, you know, as we consider these very significant, much-changed properties going forward, that the timeframe is not the current owner's circle of effect, but rather what could possibly happen over time, right? You know, when this gets sold to someone who wants to make a restaurant out of the whole thing, et cetera. So, I just want to put in two, two elements that I wanted to bring up to the planning board's concern. And first and foremost is Backbrook, which is a water course that's very dear to my heart because it goes right down here, and this drains the Nelsonville Highlands. And it's been there since eighteen fifty-three, I believe, it was taken off of Garden Street where it wanted to flow, and moved up to my backyard. Of course, it wasn't my backyard. Of course, it wasn't my backyard at that time. So, and now how does that impact this, this plan? Just one way is that, and I've spoken to Susan about this, and I think we've already come to an agreement, but I can't speak for the final effect, my property goes like this, it's here, 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 and here. Currently, there is a doorway here that I put in myself when I put up the fence that's currently here. And the reason for this was to provide access should we need to get to Back Brook to maintain it. That is, should stone need to be brought into the site, should silt and mud need to be taken out of the site, because if it goes up this way, up my driveway, it doubles the cost of any remediation. So I'm very concerned about that, and I would just like it to be considered and possibly put into a recommendation in the planning board, that there is a panel that goes here, and I've already talked to Susan about this, and she's on board, that gives emergency or maintenance access to Back Brook, allowing stone work to be brought in in order, 'cause I've, I've at my own expense created two stone walls down the concourse to stop erosion.
But you're talking about on her property though, right?
I'm talking about, no, I'm talking about simply an access issue.
From her property?
From her property.
But to get onto her property?
No, to get onto Back Brook.
From her property.
From her property.
But you'd have to.
See, I'm the only property that actually owns both sides of Back Brook. Back Brook goes all the way down into the Hudson through Spring Brook, where you guys have no authority, but prior to that, it's village maintained. It is required that they maintain whatever they gotta do to keep it open. Well, I'm helping out because I'm the only one that has this spit of land, and it's an old fact from the early twentieth century, how it got that way, but I'm the only one with actual ownership of the land on both sides of Back Brook. So anyway, I just wanna, I, I've got a project coming up in the, either the spring or the fall, where we're going to be really firming up stone wall work, and I'm gonna need access. And so I just think that this is incumbent upon the new owner to allow that access.
You might talk about an easement.
Well, whatever it might be, I don't, I'm not sure legally what needs to be in place, but I think an easement is somewhat in order with this.
And that would be negotiable with the property owner.
Just, and now, currently, I use this as a back entrance, and I totally concur with Susan that that's not my right.
You can't do that anymore.
I can't do that no more. That's fine. But I just wanna make sure that should it be required to either take out dirt from the brook to keep it viable, or bring in stone in order to, you know, decrease erosion around there, 'cause this really is a crisis point. And we've had, I wanna totally say this is fabulous, what they're doing here, but that's never really been the reason Back Brook floods and puts a ton of water in Seth Gallagher's basement.
That was not our concern, our concern was basically just, you know, curvy as surface, you know.
And, and this was gonna be fabulous.
And also runoff into Back Brook, 'cause obviously it does flow to the Hudson, even though it's not considered an attributable area.
You don't really get that much, it tends to go, it tends to wanna go back toward Garden Street, where it originally flowed, right? So that's not the problem. What happens occasionally is we have two days of monsoons in June or July.
Or tomorrow.
Or whatever, tomorrow, and it, it gets, it just jumps the bank. It's just more capacity than it has, it's one of the things I wanna do is widen that bank right now. So anyway, that's just something to consider.
Does, does the village have any interest in getting in from that side, or only from northern?
I don't think it touched that group for twenty years. I used to live on Garden Street, they never cleaned the back part, that was part of the deal, they were supposed to clean the whole brook from Main Street to, over the end to behind Eisenhauer's, and I lived in Garden Street for thirty years, I never, I never did anything.
Yeah, it's all decided out of mind.
I'm just asking if the village needs access.
Street helps.
Well, I can go from this, that was my question too, is if the village, I mean, it's really, if the village needed access, we can certainly make it a condition of approval, but it sounds like, again, this is another private agreement between the neighbors.
No, absolutely not. You missed, the point is not that at all, the point is the village needs to be able to get in to maintain Back Brook. At our last flood, they had to come in and lay down sandbags, what are they gonna, go from Church Street all the way to the back of the property to put in sandbags?
We, we, the village also had to, had to address some trees a couple of years ago that were growing in the brook and had to access it.
Absolutely, a tree removal in that buffer zone.
Of a woman's hometown garden.
But does, but does the village need a right of way to enter private property, deal stuff that's, that's their responsibility, or?
Yeah, they would need access.
They still need a right of way?
Yeah, they would need access over.
To cross private.
To cross private property, get to the brook.
But a right of way easement.
Rather than relying on necessity.
Yeah.
So the village actually has access from, from Northern Ave, there's actually a strip of land between the properties until you reach the Heffernans' property.
Right.
There's a strip of land owned by the village between the Garden Street and Church Street properties, and this is Phil Heffernan's, so that's where their access stops. So the access to the brook would actually come from here, through here, and then to Phil's property, and then, and then, so there is access, so access is not required through our property. That doesn't mean that she wouldn't provide it if necessary, but there's actually access from public right of way to the brook.
It's an awful long way, and it also would impede any work that I wish to do at this price and way. I'm not criticizing anything, I'm just saying that it's now the time to bring this up.
Well, what, a good thing is, you know, you can also discuss this with Susan, since you've had these conversations, and maybe just make it an easement.
Well, no, I think we've already agreed.
Yeah.